It is Wednesday, June 15th at 7:03 PM. We gathered here tonight to convene a meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Can we get started with a roll call of board members, please?
George Penn.
Yes.
Maynard.
Yes.
DeBella.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have appropriate confirmation of the meeting notice posting?
We can also post it on Friday at the library post office in City Hall.
Okay, thank you. At this time, with the first member on the docket, does anyone here feel the need to recuse themselves from the proceeding? Okay. I will now open a public hearing to hear comments in regards to the application for the issuance of a variance to parent or chapter 22 dot 713, parent three, parent, parent B, parent four, and chapter 22 point 711, parent three, parent, parent B, parent eight, to reduce the paved setback surface from three feet for the side yard and five feet to the rear yard and zero feet for 208 and 206 South Main Street and from five feet to zero feet for 210 and 212 South Main Street. First off, could we have any comments from counsel regarding any potential legal ramifications that could arise with the potential granting of this variance?
Certainly. Each of the matters before the board this evening are variance requests. I think that all of you have sat through previous variance meetings. A variance is not to be granted unless an applicant demonstrates certain things. And you can look at their application. The application walks through the criteria that they must demonstrate. They must show that the standards in the chapter on zoning will not, or if adhered to would result in unnecessary hardship to the landowner, that there is some exceptional quality to the property in question that is driving this request, that if you grant the request that the public will not be harmed in any way, there will not be an adverse impact on either public safety, public welfare, or contrary to the spirit of the code. The applicant must show that the alternative to the code, that their variance will not violate and will provide sufficient equal protection for those same things, and that the net cumulative effect of granting the variance won't result in additional problems in the area. They also should show whether or not the existing facilities and the neighboring properties meet or do not meet the performance standards of the variance. And if they meet all those things, you can grant the variance. Again, it's, they can't have created, self-created the hardship is the key.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, is there any individuals present who would like to comment either for or against the aforementioned variance application? If so, would you please step to the podium and state your name and address?
Dan Reinhardt, 351 West Closefield, apartment 207. This, this property has some problems and some, it poses an exceptional problem for safety as well as habitability. The parking for it backs up on the 51, and that, that in itself is a safety hazard, but also that, um, there's a lack of green space in the front. We've found an effective solution for allowing the parking through the back, through access, through a driveway for the four-unit townhouses that we're going to be putting up. And it's a straight access in, and that's why we're asking for the variances, so that we don't have to jog the access, so that we can go straight in and provide adequate parking off the street. So we don't have to back up on, have residents back up on 51, create a much safer environment for the area. All the backup parking will be eliminated throughout this area. And one of the problems with these properties has also been that they've been blighted throughout years. They've been kind of run down, and part of the reason for that is, is if you can't provide parking, it starts to go down and then properties become blighted. So we put together a thoughtful and appropriate solution for the parking, for the access, through the parking access that we're going to be putting in throughout the, it's actually two four-unit townhouse complexes that are going to be neighbor to it. And we just need the setbacks to be put to zero, so that we can have that, that drive-in parking throughout the back and off the street. So it's, it's, it's an exceptional situation based on, I think, plotting that was done years ago, when parking wasn't really much of a consideration, and the lots were smaller and didn't allow for parking. So, but, but the solution that we found is a safe one, and it makes sense.
Thank you. Is there any other individual here who would like to comment on this matter? Please step to the podium, state your name and address.
There's now 110 Street, North Arthur Drive, 82, and I have the property at 203 South Main Street, the yellow building. I'm just not sure that I understand exactly how this is all going to work. I understand the front, which I'm, was surprised they ever let them put that other driveway in there. How far over in the back actually is that supposed pad going to be? And is that for all the building or just, just the effects? So you will be able to have empty parking spaces?
It doesn't do much, that's two families, so there's two stalls per family. Four parking, there will be no more parking from the start at all.
I understand that. And then how far, so they won't really have any backyard, it'll be all parking?
It'll take away a good portion of the backyard. It won't be that, it won't be, you know, too close.
Well, no, because of all the property behind the curb, they'll come right out of that one, right? Because I know it's a small area, it's just a small area. And then that will be coming off the, how deep over there?
Yeah.
So all the way over? Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And then you're going to take that driveways out of the front, use that green space?
Okay, I mean, okay, so the big slab that is currently there, is that all your property? Is it, or is that kind of split between the two?
The gravel part is my property.
Okay, your line goes right to the edge of the green space?
Green space. I'll collect the materials.
Okay. Are there any other individuals here who would like to comment either for or against the matter? At this time, do we have a staff recommendation report?
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Okay. Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll second.
Second, okay, thanks. At this time, do we have a staff recommendation report?
All in favor of said motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Post.
Motion carried.
Well, kind of the highlights of the staff recommendations, there are two variances being requested, the driveways crossing over the lot lines of two properties, that's why two of the variances are needed. The other variances for the pad itself is a little closer to the west lot line than allowed by the ordinance. So the staff are recommending approval of the variances with the condition that the petitioner obtain all the future permits needed to allow the construction of the two four-unit townhouses. And if that is not achieved, then the variance would go away, or would not have been approved. The petitioner also provide a fence or landscape screening on the north side of the parking pad, that is the rear yard of a lot on Lawton Street, that would have, that would be visually impacted by the parking lot, and a screen on that side would be advantageous for that adjoining property owner. And the basis of the recommendation to grant is primarily based on the fact that this lot is significantly substandard compared to other two lots in the city, and that coupled with the fact that there's no parking on South Main, which is unusual, most residential properties have on some on-street parking, at least for most, the majority of the year. So the fact that it's really difficult to, at this point, given the size of the structure and the size of the lot, without easements from adjoining property owners, it appears to be impossible to get a driveway off of South Main that could get to the rear yard. Therefore, this variance that allows for the crossing of the side lot lines along the rear is a solution that satisfies the, that difficulty of the fact that this lot is so small.
Thank you. At this time, I will now open the matter of the variance application for deliberation by board members. We may now proceed with a board member discussion.
So I have a couple of questions. So from, one of the things that you had said was that this would be the best way to do it without jogging things around. Is there other options that you had or that you explored, or was that just speaking?
If, if we can get the two-foot setback, we got people coming in on High Street between the townhouse complexes, and then instead of being able to drive in, protecting it's safer alternative for guys to just make out, you would have to drive over and then into the foundation for that five-foot setback. The two-foot setback allows for straight-in parking.
Okay, that's what you meant by that, okay. Okay.
If it helps, it's this line right here.
Right, I didn't know where the jogging in was coming from, so that makes sense.
The objective is to try to have this line up as opposed to, if this variance weren't granted on this side, you just would have to slide this way and then this would be the end.
Right. Then my other question is, on the south side of the building, there's no way to put another, there's no room there to put a driveway in that goes back and, back in and out?
There always is.
All right, those are my two questions. All right.
I have a question. How does this affect as far as the sale of these properties later on? Is there going to be, that they're all going to be combined into one property, or?
They wouldn't have to be. They, if they were, there would be a procedure required to accomplish that. There will be an easement that will have to be recorded across 216 through 10, for benefit of 206, in order to ensure there's access into the future. That would be a condition that probably should be added to that list of conditions.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Ramona, along those same lines, are we requiring the removal of the existing driveways on, on Main Street there?
Yes, we, you could, as a condition of this, the plan commission will be seeing this property and approval of that duplex next week. The plan commission will most certainly require that, but you certainly would have the ability to make that a condition of this variance if you're granting it, certainly related to it.
And I expected that the property owner would want that. I was just wondering if that was going to be a condition.
I think it would be a good condition, both of those. The easements, required easement, as well as the removal of those driveways would be appropriate, I think.
Now, and this will remain a duplex, you said? It won't, it's not going to potentially be converted into a single-family residence?
I don't perceive that. No, I perceive it saying it's a duplex.
Because, I mean, that's one thing I mean, if it was going to stay, if it would potentially shift to a single-family, would we want it to be two spots per unit?
Two drive entrances?
Right. But if it's going to be approved for a, two duplexes, I guess those are.
And each, on each side, they would need their own drive, entrance and exit. Anybody else? Okay, if there is no further discussion regarding this matter, I would like at this time to make a motion to close the board discussion and place the matter of the variance application to board members to either vote for or against its granting. Do I have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Was that a motion you made?
I made a motion, yes, I made the motion. Okay.
Second?
I will.
Tim?
May we have a roll call on this matter?
Does that include the conditions and the findings?
With, with, yes. Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Forsted?
Yes.
Callen?
Yes.
The variance motion is granted. Okay, now we'll move on to the next matter on the agenda tonight, and that would be...
Right on your page.
Where is it?
Page. Number five. Number four. Or five, I'm sorry.
We will now hear comments regarding the request by James and Susan Hill for the variance to chapter 22 point 711, parent three, parent, parent B, parent five, to reduce the side setback from three feet to 1.5 feet, to allow the construction of an accessory structure closer to the lot line than allowed by ordinance for 707 Washington Street. I will, does anybody at this time need, feel the need to recuse themselves in this matter? Okay. I will now open a public hearing to hear comments in regards to the application for the issuance of the aforementioned variance application. And first off, may we have any, have comments from legal counsel regarding any potential legal issues which could arise with the granting of this?
Again, my general comments that I made prior to Mr. Reinhardt's application would control here, this is a variance request, the variance applicant needs to show that there's unique characteristics regarding their property, such that they cannot, the, the code cannot be enforced without undue hardship on them. This hardship cannot be self-created, and their proposed solution must be in the public's best interest, not contrary to the safety or welfare of the general public, and not contrary to the spirit and intent of the code.
Thank you. At this time, are there any individuals present who wish to comment either for or against the aforementioned application? Please step to the podium, state your name and address.
Dan Hill, 707 Washington Street. I just want to put my garage back where it was. It was falling down, we took it down before it fell down and caused damage to everything that was in it. Then I realized that I didn't have a three-foot setback. I didn't know where my property line was at the time. That's my ignorance. It's not an excuse, but I'd still like to put it back where it was, so it's up my driveway. My lot is funky shaped, I don't really have anywhere else to go with.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to comment on the matter? Okay, at this time, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Polls and passes. Do we have a staff recommendation report regarding this matter?
I think the last item, the significant issue is very oddly configured, but the rear yard doesn't include a two-car. So while it's possible to construct a garage, they're, and they're not building a really large garage, I think that's the other thing to note about this application, if somebody were trying to put a large two-car garage in the rear yard like this, it might be different, but it is a relatively reasonable-sized garage for the lot. But it is, it's only 30 feet. That is very unusual compared to other, most other lots in a similar zoning situation. As I said, I think it's probably possible to put the garage in and have, you know, the garage at any case, any case. But this is certainly an unusual for a lot that, one is that it's only considered a variance. Staff recommending approval of the variance, with the condition that any drainage from the structure be directed to, away from the western property boundary to the north and the south, so as to not impact the adjoining property owner, and the overhang be no greater than a foot on the building's own maintenance, in some fashion, from the property owner's own land.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to now open the matter for the variance application for deliberation by board members. We may now proceed with a board member discussion. I, first off, have a letter here from the residents at 713 Washington Street I would like read into the records, and it states that as the owner of 713 West Washington, or Washington Street, I have, having past experiences with the zoning board of appeals, I wish to express my support for granting the variance to reduce the setback at 707 Washington Street as described. I feel the intended improvements would add value, not just to the Hill's property, but to the neighborhood as well. I would appreciate this letter being read into the record of the hearing, and if confirmation is required, please call me. Thank you. Michael in score. Anybody else have anything to comment on?
But basically, you're just putting your garage back where it was?
Correct.
Same size?
A little better, but it wouldn't impact the property line, it would go a foot over into my own property.
So you went from 13 feet wide to 14 feet, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
I was up there just a little while ago, and there's a, they have a concrete driveway, which I would...
Yeah, I want to make sure I have the right property. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
One on the right or left?
The west?
Back that way, the big black truck in the driveway, here.
Oh.
That's it.
That's it, right there, okay. I was up there a little while ago and talked with the landowners, and with the concrete driveway that's there, I would, I, I may be incorrect in thinking this, but that, being that that is currently there already, that it would be grandfathered in and void of the setback restriction that exists now, am I correct to think that?
The driveway would not have to be moved.
Yes, okay, that, that, okay. And I was talking with them, and we went back and I looked at everything, and the current slab that is there extends about a foot to the west in, into the setback area. And my suggestion with them was that maybe if they ran, put that, the garage, the edge of the garage to run right down concurrent to the edge of the driveway, it, it would put it a foot more into their backyard versus sticking out the other way. It would allow for a little more drainage with the overhang, and they seemed to agree with me that, that that would work for them, that they didn't have an issue with that.
If I don't have any other choice.
Yeah. That, because they, it would still allow plenty of room to access the garage. They have kind of a slab on the side of their, like a stu, a step down of concrete, and he was talking about having to work that down or something, and we kind of measured everything out, and it's, it appeared to me, and to them, I believe, that if, that they could just, like, potentially go right down the side of the driveway with the edge of the garage, and then the overhang would, you wouldn't even have to worry about any drainage issues going into the adjacent property. I don't know if that's feasible.
Six-inch variance instead of an 18-inch variance then, is that what you're suggesting?
Where this, where they're going to pour the new, they're going to remove the slab that currently exists, and they're going to replace it with another slab to put the garage on. And the current slab extends approximately 12 or 13 inches over towards the lot line. And my suggestion was potentially to just run the slab right down adjacent and concurrent with the edge of the driveway.
Right, so you're saying you're going to, you're moving the new slab over a foot?
A foot, yeah, about 12 inches, something on that effect.
To the east though, right?
To the east, yes.
Not to the west.
So variance would be six inches, not 18 inches?
No, it'd be 24.
It would be, no, actually, actually, there's like 28 inches from the edge of the driveway to the lot line currently, so there's only about 16 inches, maybe, from the current slab to the edge of the lot line, and that would take it from 16 inches to 28 inches off of the lot line.
So you still need a, you still need a variance, but less of a variance?
But less of a variance, yes, and...
An eight-inch variance.
Yeah, and they seem to be okay with that, or...
That's the only choice I have. I mean, I'm not sure how the garage door is going to line up.
The drive-in, yeah.
The drive-in.
Yeah, we, we kind of looked at, and...
Having that excess, I'm not sure if you can center the door or move the door in the structure that holds up.
Yeah, I, I thought we kind of covered that when I looked at it, that there would be adequate room there, that you would, you'd have like 14 inches along the other side of the driveway adjacent to the home, to where you could still directly drive it without having to shimmy and back and forth, but then you wouldn't have to worry about any potential erosion on the lot line into the neighbors with the overhang from the building, because if it rains hard, the law of gravity is that the water's running, it doesn't just get to the dry, edge of the, unless you put gutters on there.
It has a tendency to slow over.
They would require gutters on the edge of the driveway?
To control the runoff, you'd have to have gutters.
Well, I have a couple of questions on this. Was, when this garage was originally built, was there a vari, I mean, I don't know how old that thing is, was there a variance granted back in the day to, to build that?
Probably no regulation, no regulations.
There was no, yes.
No predating or...
Okay, so then, with that slab being there, I mean, does that get, if she left the slab, could she built it in the, could she rebuild it in the existing spot?
The slab is, it can't be worked with, the puddings are shot on it, they, they need to pour a new slab.
If it wasn't, you can't. Once the garage is down, you have to build it to conform.
Okay. I didn't know if that included the slab still being, being there, and, okay.
And that was the reasoning for my input, that if it just ran directly right along the edge of the driveway, that it would require less of a variance. I didn't know if that's applicable or not, or if it is a point to be taken.
It doesn't really make a whole lot of difference, as long as there's a gutter on it and they drain it the right way?
What do they have back there next to the garage? Is that another garage on the existing property?
There's a barn on the property next to me that used to go with my property. There used, that 28 feet from my driveway towards my neighbors used to be my property before I...
I bought the property.
Oh, that empty lot, the empty area?
The empty lot, yeah, that's, there's 28 feet there that was sold off from my property to my neighbors before I bought the property, and that was done in 1991, and that's what I got left, was 28 inches. So I don't know what a variance was in 1991, but there was more than enough, there's 16 feet between where my old garage was and where that barn is, that it could have been split if, if the variance had been taken.
So I guess I'm to understand that it really isn't going to affect the variance granting one way or another, whether they, eight inches or-
Put in half.
Eighteen inches or whatever the difference is, nobody here seems to have an issue with it.
As long as it's got gutters, and that's part of the thing, I have no issue with the full thing.
Okay, I just thought it might have been easier to get something done if we were, if they were willing to compromise, but if that's not a issue, I guess we don't worry about that.
So then, one more question, so the gutters would have to run front to back, and then shoot behind the garage, is basically what you had said, right? Because it has to run away from the lot line, isn't that what you said?
So if it ran toward the street, it would have to, you know, I don't know the, I can't, I don't have any good company on here, but you just want to direct it away from the western property boundary, and that's a, the, the inspector can look at that to ensure that it's been accomplished, when the site is graded and the elevations are all established, and-
Any other, okay?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance to reduce the side by, side, side yard setback from three feet to one and a half feet with the staff recommendations and conditions.
Just second.
Those conditions now include gutters?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have a roll call?
Well, one quick question, so it'd be gutters on, just to clarify, so we're talking only about the one side, but does this also mean that she has to put gutters on the other side too?
No, that's, that's their property, if they wanted to run off-
I just want to make sure, because we're, you know.
Yeah, they just, it's to protect the neighboring adjacent property.
I just want to make sure.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that, please?
Mr. Long.
Can we have the roll call?
Capellan?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Verstudd?
Yes.
Maynard?
Yes.
Call?
Motion for the, uh, granting of the variance is granted. Thank you for your time. Okay, now, moving on, we have one more item on the docket tonight, and that would be... Here comments regarding the request by James Potter and Kepner Fox for variance to Chapter 22.402 Perrin 10 Perrin to increase the driveway width from 24 feet to 31 feet, 223 Wyman Drive. Is there anybody here at this time that needs to recuse themselves? Okay, I will now open a public hearing to hear comments in regards to the application for the issuance of the variance. May we first have any comments from counsel that he hasn't covered earlier?
Again, the primary concern is the nature of the lot, whether or not the reason that the code cannot be filed is due to self-created hardship. If there's an, a hardship which renders the property unusable in its present format, and the proposed variance is, does not offend the spirit and intent of the code, you may grant it, but in, as in all cases, you're going to look at the nature of the property, the adjoining property owners, whether this is going to increase or decrease the safety factors and other public welfare issues.
Thank you. At this time, are there any individuals present who wish to comment, either for or against the aforementioned variance application? Please step to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is James Potter, I live at 223 Wyman Drive. As you can tell by the yard, I'm new to the neighborhood, I just moved in, and the property is set, the property is such that it's a, it's a baseball diamond shape, and when the, we just want to be able to go directly, because it's on that corner, directly in and out of all three doors to the garage, which wouldn't have been able, wouldn't have been possible the other way. We do have signatures from all the neighbors, we're sitting at 250-foot radius, I believe everyone, to include Chad down here at the golf course, which they just signed on here, I understand the driveway at 223 Wyman, is 31 feet, and is a violation of the ordinance 22.402, with driveways where access to driveways are adjacent to properties. I have a neighbor within 250 feet of the residence in question, I do not have an issue with the size of the driveway, and believe that the variance requested for the size of the driveway should be approved. Would you guys like to?
Sure.
With my wife, Kepner.
So, Kepner Fox, 223 Wyman Drive, when we were purchasing the property, it was part of our deal with the builder, before we actually even signed our mortgage, to increase the size of the driveway, it was our understanding as a builder, had contacted Mississippi Edison to verify that the increase in the driveway was valid, he will say it was, therefore was part of our mortgage, so it came as a surprise that it was not, that it did violate a, it was not our intent, obviously, to violate in ordinance, but because of how you come in from Fairway, yeah.
Fairway.
Yeah.
Fairway.
And turning right into that first garage, and how the house was offset in the property, it made it very difficult without going into the, into the yard to make that cut, and also, we have 220 acres right on the, on our street, so there's ample parking there.
And it also states in the, in the back that you have, that there's, there's at least six, I believe the six are probably just on, on Wyman, I believe our builder was up and measured all of the driveways, actually, one, one day, I think there were 10 or 11 total between Fairway and Wyman, or bigger, so I think it was just in keeping with the neighborhood, that it was called, called it a set through.
Is there anybody else here who wishes to comment on the matter? Step to the podium, state your name and address, please.
David Olss, 240 Wyman Drive, I live right across the street, and I don't see a problem with it, I, actually, I think it looks a lot better this way than it did before, because you do have the three cars, and you're not trying to drive over and around and through it, and like you said, there's, I have walked the neighborhood, and a lot of people with the three-car garages have wider driveways than the 24 feet, doesn't seem to be a problem, and seeing that we have new neighbors, it's not their fault, I think it goes back on the builder, neither near, nor here, nor there, but I think it'd be a good welcoming to Edgerton to approve this variance, that's my opinion.
Thanks. Is there anybody else here who wishes to comment? Please step to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Lepiel, I live across the street at 240 Wyman Drive, I have witnessed Kate and Jim backing out of their driveway, out of that single-car garage door, and not being able to make the cut and destroying their dirt that was there before. I do see an issue that prior to them enlarging the driveway, they would come approaching from the east, and when approached from the east, they actually have to do like a double back, like a U-turn, to get that, that garage door, do you understand what I'm saying? Versus maybe a safer or easier way would be to go down the street, turn around at the cul-de-sac, and approach the driveway coming from the west at a different angle, doesn't make sense for somebody, for somebody to do that. I also think it would be good to approve variance on the application of their variance. Welcome, welcome down from Madison, Edgerton.
Thank you. Anybody else here wishing to comment? Okay, at this time, I would now like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion passes, would now take, make a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have a staff recommendation report this time?
Yes, there's a few things I'd like to point out, if I could. One is, this is the drawing, so your packet, it has a red line on it, because the driveway opening is not drawn to scale on that, the red line is what it actually would be at 24 feet, that line shown there is probably what it was built as, so the wider driveways, this works, so you, everyone's clear on what the ordinance is, the ordinance is 24 feet in the, I'll say the sidewalk, it's the property line, which is immediately a foot away from the sidewalk, so we use a sidewalk as a rule of thumb in the field, so it's 24 feet there, and then from that point forward, you can widen out to, out some landscape, other landscape limits, to just about anything you would want. So, when, the comments about driveways in that subdivision, our measurements are that there are in fact six driveways in that subdivision, that, and it's both streets, not just one, that are out of compliance, your packet includes a kind of a brief, a script that was found in the review of the file on why those exist, I can give, I can give you much more information than what's there, many of them, most of them were 1997, so many years ago, but in any event, there's six that we're aware of that are out of compliance, the, if you can look at the photograph here, you can see, if you can discern, right here is the original edge of the driveway, this was the driveway width, am I correct in that?
No.
It wasn't right here?
It was about 18 and a half feet, some of that was, there was a partial corner taken out to add a piece that wouldn't crack when you drive over.
Got it. So 18 and a half feet is what it was originally constructed as, it now looks, this, between here and here is 17 and a half, according to our measurements now, so that other piece that was removed. So, the additional seven feet that would have been allowed, six and a half feet, would take you about to this score line, see this line right here, that score line in the concrete? So what, the width of driveway that's, that would be permitted under the ordinance is about where the arrow is, so it was constructed considerably narrower than the ordinance allowed, which makes your arguments about trying to get in totally understandable. So, I guess I just wanted to clarify that had it been constructed at the 24 feet, I think it would have been a totally different circumstance than, than when it was at 18 or 18 and a half feet, the way it was built. So I just wanted to point out those two things for clarification, and the recommendation is because this is a self-created hardship, which is one of the conditions of the granting of variance, we're recommending denying the variance.
Would I be correct to assume that it would require them to remove that last section of the concrete at the driveway entrance, about where the last section is on the right, and then they would be able to, as soon as they got past the edge of the sidewalk, they could take it and bear it over to where it currently is now?
They would have to modify the driveway to be in conformance, they would decide how, what 24 feet they wish it would have, and how they would, but yes, once you get beyond the, the property line, then it can splay out to be what?
So, then there's no set, let's see, with, um, angle or whatever, as soon as it's past the edge of the sidewalk-
Correct.
-it could literally go, just as long as there's a green space or a crack of something between the sidewalk and the driveway, that would be in conformance. Okay?
They could shrink it in from each side and have it angled towards where they are at right now.
Or they, or they could take a section off of the, the left a little bit and add it on to the right?
Well, I know that you add on, but I think-
And shift it over, is what I'm saying.
And 24 feet, they have to-
Yes, so if they were-
Basically, the only thing they have to take out would be the apron, not the driveway part, they wouldn't have to worry about the driveway, it'd be on the sidewalk, right?
That's correct.
It has to be 24 feet on the private side of the, of the sidewalk, so you-
On the easement.
Oh, okay, so then you could, you go 24 feet and then, okay.
So everything that's currently there on the house side of the driveway would be okay?
No.
No, no.
You'd have to go 24 feet, okay, go to the left line, and you go over 24 feet.
They could angle it here and here.
They would have to take off part of that, and where you angle it to is-
Is to their discretion.
I mean, they could literally cut a foot of concrete out of there and have their, would that be, I'm just asking.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, I mean, it would look, it would look hideous. Exactly, that's one-
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm trying to get my point across.
Here's the slab.
It would look pretty bad having to do that.
Yeah, I mean, to what you're saying, they would, something like this would be acceptable.
Who would be responsible for doing that? Would the builder, because he did it, or would you be?
You'd have to go back on the builder, and then that would go back through, like, through the concrete people, and blah, 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 no. I, honestly, I really, really would like to just be the way it is, so that I can put my truck in and out of the deep door, because that's, because the short, the, the single car is the deep one, and-
But you could, you could very easily leave the right side the way it is, angle, angle your left side, so that when you're coming in with the small car, you could angle, and it would be going with the way you normally come in from the east.
It's seven feet.
Yeah, it's, yes.
Nobody else cares.
I guess the-
Are we gonna go back and get the, the other six homeowners too?
Well, then, you're also talking about reforen-
See, then, and then I, I guess, you know-
Are you, are we opening a, a corner slot?
Understand, stand from your point of view where you're going, but what happens if somebody else comes in there and says, well, they got a 31-foot one, maybe we're gonna put in a 34-foot one, where, where does the ordinance-
I know that, yeah.
Take, you know, I think that's more what we're dealing with here than anything.
The precedent issue is always a precedent issue, so the, the whole part of the conversation is what the variances are about, so you weigh each of you individually, the, whether or not there's hardship, and you make that decision, but just because you grant a variance for a side yard for a garage, doesn't mean that everyone in the city has a right to a variance for a side yard. You have to consider which application on its-
Yes, but then that does give any future applicant ammunition to say, well, this person got it, why shouldn't I?
That's always what you hear.
That's, that's, that's the legal-
One of the considerations is the net cumulative effect of granting the variance, is that going to create greater hardship? For example, there have been any number of cases where a builder has built a garage, or a house in fact, too close to a setback line, and has had to remove the offending portion of the structure, or move the entire structure, if that- portion of the structure or move the entire structure if, if that was more feasible, but that's entirely up to the, the property owner. Oftentimes, you see this on lakes. Someone comes in and says, well, I, I want to have a deck overlooking this lovely lake, and don't bother to check what the setback is, and they build a, you know, lovely $30,000 deck, which then has to be removed. So, it is not unusual, that's where the self-created hardship aspect comes in. Uh, it is very unfortunate that these folks had a builder that apparently didn't check the rules, um, but this, I, I don't know that I've, I've heard, and this is not, I don't make the decisions and determinations here, but I don't know that I've heard anything unique about the property that would, um, normally justify a variance from the application of the code. It is clearly a condition that did not exist when they moved there and therefore is, they created. They had use of the property up to that point, certainly, and, uh, this just makes it nicer, much like a deck on the front of a house at a lake house that is now too close to that lake, contrary to whatever the setback is. So, that is something that you need to consider. Now, as to the, what about the other six? Each one of, those all stand alone, um, those aren't before you here tonight, and it would be inappropriate to consider them, but some things that if you were considering them, uh, if they were here is, did they create it? Did someone else create it? Is there something unique about the property? We don't know any of those things, uh, here. Were they built before or after the change in the, uh, code? That's something to consider. Uh, so were they grandfathered, in other words? And, uh, to a limited extent, you can perhaps forgive someone that applies, shows a, say a 30-foot wide, uh, um, garage or driveway opening and gets granted, um, that, as opposed to someone that shows a 24-foot wide and then builds it to 30. Um, and I know that there's a couple of circumstances where someone has come in and said, I'd like this, shows it incorrectly, it's granted. You, you have perhaps more sympathy, although, um, strictly speaking from a legal standpoint, the error of a, a municipal official isn't just cause to violate the code. Much like if, if a law enforcement officer thinks it's 45, uh, when it's really 35 and lets you drive 45, that doesn't, if it's properly posted, doesn't give you the right to drive 45.
Okay, I guess. Part of my take here with this is, you know, after hearing your legal side of the issue, that these people actually didn't do that, but I believe there was something in here somewhere that, man, I can't, I gotta find it. The, the company that constructed your stuff supposedly contacted somebody at City Hall and was given a verbal okay to do this?
Correct.
But there is no record of it? That nobody, it's like this guy just went ahead and did what he wanted? And I, I think-
I wish you would have been here this evening to get a death from the family.
Pardon?
Tony would just go, "Build it." With flat feet builders, he'd have a death from the family. He wanted to be here this evening, but-
Okay.
Unfortunately, you could not be.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, from my standpoint here, it's like, I would feel bad to make you legally responsible and financially responsible to correct this situation, but if this guy went ahead and did something that he knew he shouldn't have, I think that they should be held responsible and that they should-
I don't think that's what happened, though. I think he did call, um, and, and ask the question. I mean, he builds in Madison, he builds a entire world.
Let's see, where, where do we got, I gotta find this.
This is a question that he's not just gonna do because of getting a day or a little bit financially, all that, yeah. Was he in the wrong? He said that, you know, they were wrong for not getting it in writing, absolutely, but I didn't, I called it, said there's not a maximum. Um, and, and quite frankly, had, um, this not been part of the deal, I'm not quite sure that this would have worked as a house for us.
How did you find out that you were out of code?
Two builders, I took it literally two hours after they poured it, Tom was out measuring.
Just happened to go by.
You can see it from the main room.
So, regarding the conversation, we can't substantiate any conversation from any staff members here that that took-
That's right.
-part that would make it unusual for anyone to say, yes, go ahead. Is it, anyone, everyone here knows that a permit is required for all driveways? So, it would be very unlikely that a staff member that answering the phone would say, oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
See, that, that's where I'm-
It was still under permit. It was still under permit with Kelly, and there were a lot of issues with that being filed between somewhere. There were issues with stuff being filed and with, you know, I don't wanna put blame, but you even, you were sort of upset with me that day about an occupancy permit, and it wasn't, that people shouldn't be living in this house and-
Yeah, there was an issue with the occupancy permit, you're correct. I certainly wasn't, I was, we weren't, should we take care of-
Right, but there was a permit to have a driveway. I mean, you showed it to me.
Yes, it's part of the original-
And that was, that was when I saw the 24 foot, and I'm like, boy.
Right, but there's still construction being done, as you can see on our house. Like, it's not completed. Um, the, the, the lawn is still not in. I mean, there is still construction on our house.
We had a homeowner across the street, when we worked through our process of building nine years ago, uh, due to the requirements that are, um, put in place for the subdivision, the type of house that we built was immediately 1,800 square feet, one first floor. And with the shape of our lot, uh, we're on a, our, our driveway is on the short side of the curb, and we had a difficult time with the side of our house on our lot to meet all of our setbacks and to do what we needed to do. We had to lower our dr, lower our garage floor a foot and a half, so we could meet grade on our driveway. I mean, and there's other lots still that are not built from that subdivision, that you're gonna have one heck of a time trying to put a, let alone put a driveway on the, as curb, where the last one and two come in, um, three is right on the curb there, two. But I'm just saying, and this is an odd-shaped lot also.
It's weird shaped, yeah.
Very, and-
It's only one out there like it.
Yeah, so I said, and-
It's only one out there like it.
They're probably very, very, very close to even meeting what they need to meet at the back. So, had that house been pushed forward, would have made it even more difficult for them to use their driveway, the way the house was designed. They did not design the house, Tony designed the house. Built it as back home. Had that deep side of the, the garage been reversed, wouldn't have been probably as much of an issue on that driveway.
That's what I'm saying. If you angled the driveway on the other side, you wouldn't have that. You'd still have your straight-in drive for your long garage.
That would look worse than this.
But, but, no, it, it is what it is.
Wouldn't.
I think-
Would just be angled the other way. As they come in from the east, they could drive right in.
You know, I don't have an issue with these people. Like I said, I, I don't want them to-
The rules are 24, are 24 feet.
But, this builder deliberately-
And when he was using it, it wasn't at 24 feet, it was at 18.
I know this builder. When you were using the driveway, before.
I guess, they don't, they don't give verbal, they don't give verbal okays.
Yeah, it was 18 and a half. It wasn't 24.
And she was trying to move it in.
But that's what I'm saying.
So, if it would have been 24, you probably wouldn't have had that problem.
No, that's, that's not her.
I, I think it could be, but I think-
I was out there.
I don't wanna be the one responsible or liable for any expenses that arise. And I don't, I don't know if-
We're recording all this, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it'd probably be easier if only one group was talking, since our mics are all on.
Well, I, I think my whole thing is, it's there, it's done.
And when you want yours, then it's gonna be 31 feet for you, and for you, and for everybody else.
I don't know, I heard.
But, but that doesn't make any difference.
I understand, I, I understand.
That doesn't make any difference.
I completely understand what you're saying.
If, if you wanted to go to 31 feet, then you come to the council and the plan board changes the rules.
Right.
And you don't have to go through the variance.
They didn't know this in time. When they bought the house, they did not know, this is what I, my whole thing is, they bought the house with the condition that the driveway be widened. Builder said, no problem. Now, the builder is the one that's in violation, not these nice folks.
Then you gotta go back to them.
That, that, that-
What I'm, and all I'm saying is, we're, we're making hardship on two of our new people here living in Ederson.
No.
Yes, we are.
No, we aren't. They gotta go back to the builder, because he didn't follow the rules.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're making hardship.
Would you want the driveway open? To go, to go house with their 24 feet?
I don't, all I know is, I said, there, there are six other driveways up there that are wider than 24 feet, that weren't, well, got, 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 got everything else done. And all I'm saying is, is to treat these people just like we treat the other six, whether it be close a blind eye to it or let it go, and the next person that comes up, who wants to go with driveway, okay, get the variance.
Well, that is a question.
Had they come down here, let me ask you a question on this. Had they come down here, had the builder come down here and asked for the variance, would you have granted?
No.
No.
I wouldn't.
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
So, I don't know if he did it to sell the house. I don't know what his intentions were, but I think now it's putting it upon the buyer rather than the builders, and that's just my personal opinion. I don't know the builder. All I know is, I said, I live across the street, and I think it looks a lot better like this than it did, and it's a little bit safer, and I say, you do it.
Is it, is the 31 feet unsafe? Or is it, is that, is the only issue that is?
It's against the rules.
It, it, yeah.
24 feet is the rule.
Yeah, it's-
So, the only issue is that they created their own hardship, is what you're saying?
Yes, they did.
Yes, it did.
They did. See, and therein lies the problem. It, the hardship was created by the homeowner, not by the parcel of land there and in itself.
But it was based on the shape and how that house was positioned?
Like I said, the driveway is only 18 feet wide. And they're gonna take, at the time, and all they said was, is they wanted it widened so that they could get into their third, now. Whether he did it wrong, the builder, to no fault of theirs. They didn't ask it to be 31 feet. They didn't ask for anything other than be able to get into their third car, you know, without having to try to go in like this and then go up and then go like this, because like I said, it was only 18 feet. You didn't have, you didn't have enough room to turn.
So, you're not-
If you look at, uh, you know, but anyway.
So, you'd be able to decrease it by-
He messed the building up.
7 feet, 7 feet.
That's a lot.
And not the whole expanse of the driveway.
But you're at, so, I just wanna understand. So, it's the space from whatever is touching-
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk, just on the house side of the sidewalk? So, that eight would stay that way?
That, that's what I was at. The approach is acceptable that way, or does the approach need to-
Also wider, wider than what's allowed.
Then that's what I-
It should be 24 feet when it ma, matches the sidewalk on both sides.
Yeah, so it's not taking in the angle going out through the street, it's where it meets the sidewalk.
You're allowed a foot and a half flare on each side. So, when it meets the curb, it should only be 27.
27 feet. And I-
On both sides of the sidewalk, it has to be 24 feet, correct?
Yeah, but there's no set amount that says it has to be in a straight line coming off the garage down to the driveway. You can bring it down, and it, again, the, the issue here is, not so much with your driveway and the 31 feet, but somebody else buys a lot of land out there and decides they're gonna put a 40-foot driveway in. Where does it end? That's why we have the 24-foot ordinance in place.
Car garage.
Well, I mean, that, going back to the other six that are out there, I know you said they're not up, but I'm assuming that the other six that we're talking about are gonna be ones that have the garage side entrances, right?
I have, I have no idea.
They're not?
Not all of them.
Not all of them?
In fact, the side entrance where they, they enter not straight in but turn, those are probably more apt to be in conformance than the three cars facing the curb.
I would like to make a comment. On garbage pickup day and recycling pickup day, that 24-foot driveway that your maximum rate amount allowed reduces down to, uh, 16 feet, backable? Because the film pushing out puts your, your bins.
My, my bins go on my, on my curve, on my-
On the easement, on the grass. And most people, that's where most people put them.
That's irrelevant.
If you drive up, yeah, that, that's, that's not, that's really-
I have a 20-foot driveway, and I put mine out, one on each side of the garage, and I still drive through with my truck. There's plenty of room in between.
Yeah, I, I, it's unfortunate, and I empathize with your situation, but if it was up to me and I was you people, I'd be going back to that builder and I'd be having to chat with him.
So, what you're trying to tell them is they have to go from where they're at, where I like, 31 feet.
I am.
They have to take so much feet up on each side.
Each side, yes.
Well, you don't, you can take it off anywhere you want.
Yeah, just right down by the sidewalk, even, there, there is no, that's what I was asking before.
How much for the-
You just have to be 24 feet.
How much needs to be taken out? Like, can it be three inches? Can there be a brick, a row of bricks?
That's, that's what I was asking, trying to, and earlier. Here, here's your slab going from your sidewalk to your garage.
Yeah.
But, but my, my driveway is like that at my house. Because in order to conform-
And the sidewalk, can you put bricks?
I see where you're going with this, but you're gonna have to shorten your apron up too. So, you're putting, like, you're, you're, you're gonna go over the curb then.
Right.
So, I, I see where you're going with that, but-
At least I'll have all the room out to the curb. I gotta tell you, really, to be, to be really honest, the reason I asked for this, and I don't particularly like bringing it up, I broke my back, my second tour Iraq, and it's really kind of a pain to try and pack the truck into that third door. And yes, Ramona, I could buy a smaller vehicle or purchase something with a camera, which are both things that you told me, but, like, I don't, you know, I just want to be able to come and go out of the driveway, in the, to be able to stick it into the garage. You know, when I do have a truck, I'm not built to fit in something small.
And I, I, I understand, but do you also realize where I was coming from with-
I get it.
The next person builds a place next to you, and they want a 40-foot driveway.
And there's still four places up there to be, much smaller lots, but there's still-
And even, see, my house up here, where I live in town, my driveway, you-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to deny this variance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to help this guy out and give him any op-
It's created their own hardship from their builder, and you probably have to go back on him, but I think a 24-foot should give you ample room.
I guess I'll second it. Yeah, I was just trying to explain to you, my driveway looks like this at my house. That's how it had to be put in.
Correct.
It's still wide at the garage, but I, I only had this much room at the, at the sidewalk, and then I built, you know, and like I said-
So, just so I, just so I understand this, then they have to take the-
A brick in there? It just, it's in conformance then?
Did you just say that with a brick?
No, that's not in conformance then.
Does it have to be dirt and grass? Is there, is there any specific item- Is there, is there any specific item?
Because he's gotta take the apron out too. So he's not gonna have a driveway, he's not gonna have a straight shot going over a brick because the apron's gotta come out too.
Yeah, it'd have to come to here and here.
Yeah, about where that line is. Well, I mean, if, if he went on the right side, it's where the, the line, approximately where that line is. I'm taking, that's about 24 feet from what we were told. So I mean, you're taking, I mean, if you look at that and you take from that, say, from this, the, the crack on the right and go back three feet, the length of the driveway and cut that corner off and put the new apron on, you're not losing a whole lot, really. In reality, you're not losing a whole lot.
Yeah, and I'd like to add also, you could do it on each side. You could take.
Well, that would look hideous, I think.
Well, I mean, you, you could narrow it on both sides too a little bit. That's just an option that would be out there.
You don't have to cut it from the sidewalk all the way back to the garage.
Yes, yes.
How much do I have to take off the sidewalk? That's my.
I don't know what, what, how far off the sidewalk does it have to be?
You'd probably be the individual that can answer that.
Between the sidewalk and the house, you can have as much concrete as you want, they're saying. When you touch this, this sidewalk, how far from the sidewalk do I need to cut back? Are we talking four inches? I can leave a really narrow four inch crack, whatever you, whatever angle your guy can cut.
So it has to be at an angle, it can't just be a two, an inch gap between the driveway and the.
You don't want an angle.
You're still gonna have, he, he, yeah, I do.
Okay, they'll have to match the approach. Can it be filled in with brick?
You fill it in, I would think.
That's, that's what I was, you know, to help you out, that's why it's, it's that acceptable, as long as the approach is also.
Don't consider brick a, a hard surface pavement.
See, I mean.
But you still have to cut the apron also, the, the approach. Right, but, yeah, if you put brick there.
Needs to be put back to 24, 27 feet.
At the, at the street.
Yeah, at the street, 24 at the sidewalk.
Well, hold on.
Rest of the stuff could be bricked. Concrete can be cut out and has to be bricked in.
So you have.
If that's what you wish to do, yeah.
And, and then you would be in compliance.
So couldn't everything be changed to brick that's currently there?
I, I, I second it, yeah.
Couldn't we brick the whole driveway?
Couldn't you brick?
And it could be.
Could the stuff that needs to be turned out, if it's turned to brick?
Let's pull it.
Yeah, that's a quick.
We have a second.
We would assume that if entire driveway were bricked, that it would comply with the 24-foot at the side of the road. But, you know, it's a valid question.
Okay, at this time, we've had a second motion to vote to deny the variance. I'd like to place the matter for a vote, for board members.
Bellin?
Yes.
Maynard?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Long?
Reluctant to, yes.
Horsted?
No.
Only because of the hardship created.
I agree with that.
Okay. How long do we have to do that before that $200 a day fine goes into place?
How long will it be?
I have no idea, this probably has to go a quarter.
Well, can we keep us posted in the process that, you know, you're proceeding to go that way, we'll be as lean as we can?
Does that cover the?
No. We're, I, no, we'll.
You'll work on that.
We will do our very best to work with you.
I'm sorry, but. Sorry to have to do that, but if we don't, we're gonna be back here again and again and again for other people. And we probably.
Same thing gonna be done with the other six?
Yep.
That's, that, that, that only becomes in front of us. That's.
I mean, is the same person that brought this one forward, or any other?
That's not our, yeah.
Yeah, how do you, how do you mind up there?
Okay, it's the last matter on the agenda. At this time, I would like to consider approval of minutes from the May 18th meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
You have a roll call.
Maynard, was, was the motion right?
Correct. I made, I made the motion. Mr. Long, second.
Thank you. Bellin?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Horsted?
Yes.
Maynard?
Yes.
Paul?
Yep.
Yes.
Motion passes. You can adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting. You have a second.
You can say whatever you want, now it's.
Both of us, so.
I just want to get out of here. Can, can we place a matter for a vote?
Maynard?
Yes.
Bellin?
Yes.
Paul?
Yep.
Long?
Yep.
Jorsted?
Yes.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
For anybody listening, you don't know, with us being new in the neighborhood, this is really, really gonna make us look like crap. For everybody else out there, if there's, and when I mentioned that there were 10 total